Call the school board meeting to order. Uh, Member Watson, would you call the roll?
Member Cameron?
Here.
Member Glass?
Present.
Member Grover?
Here.
Member Johnston?
Here.
Member Casper?
Here.
Member Saliga Ponco?
Here.
Myself. Superintendent Dixon?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Bill Hanson?
Here.
Secretary Malo Thebault?
Yes.
And our student representatives are absent. We have a forum.
Thank you, Member Watson. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval, item of business is approval of the agenda. Uh, in their places tonight, uh, there are two agenda changes requested by administration, so I would ask for a movement of approval of the agenda as, 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 as it would stand with these two items deleted.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Move by Member Saliga Ponco, seconded by Member Cameron. Is there discussion? Member Johnston?
Uh, yes.
Oh. Member Johnston?
Uh, Chairman Grover, um, uh, the last meeting on July 20th, I gave prior notice was given for replacing the chairperson of the board. I also indicated this item to the clerk and the chairperson and the superintendent on October, August 2nd before the agenda setting being, but yet it's not on here. I'm requesting that be put on, since I gave prior notice, this does not require a vote.
That item was discussed, as, as you know, Member Johnston, since I refought, responded to your subsequent written request, that was responded to, and during the agenda process, that was not added to the agenda.
I appeal that decision.
There's nothing to appeal.
Yes, there is.
No, I'm not, I'm not making a, I'm not making a ruling, I'm stating a fact.
You did make a ruling. I'm requesting that per prior notice given on July 20th and per my notification, that this has to be on the agenda, and it's not on the agenda.
Do you, would you like to move that it be included on the agenda?
No, it's supposed to be on there. I'm requesting that you do follow the rules and put it on the agenda yourself. If you don't, I will make a motion to include that in the agenda, and I will keep putting a prior notice on this to make sure this does come up when we finally talk about this.
All right. So what are you moving, Member Johnston?
Replacing the chairperson of the school board.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, rule that out of order, 'cause what you are, in essence, asking for is reconsideration of the election of officers which occurred in January. You were not, there's a question of timeliness anyway, as well as the fact that you were not on the prevailing side in the votes for, for any of the officers. So I am only-
I appeal that decision.
All right. Is there a second of that appeal? Second? All right, is there discussion on the appeal?
Uh, yes. Uh, we have a board have a duty to look at the way this board functions, dysfunctionality this board has, disrespect that it has, uh, toward the, the citizens and the city of this, of this town. Uh, we've got, uh, we've got literally, I think, hundreds of letters, uh, asking for the chairperson's resignation. This has given us a bad name, has made us not being able to function, and we've got other items on it that's also happened as one. Uh, will add to what the public has said is inability to conduct a meeting following established rules of order, uh, introduce a properly introduce and conduct a vote, violation of advisory opinion, uh, ten, ten oh, ten oh five from the Minnesota Department Administration reference to the, to the, uh, 2012 and 13 contract that was passed by the school board and not sharing fiscal information in timely manner by, prior to passing Board Resolution B, uh, seven ten, uh, twenty seven ninety four. And due to that thing, we have a situation here which the board has to talk about. This is, uh, this is, uh, the board has ability here to ask for a resignation and have a new vote of the board, of the board chairperson. That's what this, uh, motion is about, and that's why I'm appealing your decision, that's clearly, uh, allowed for in, uh, in our rules of order.
All right. Uh, Member Johnston, would you turn your light out if you're done speaking, please? I want to remind board members that we are not talking about the subject, we are talking about the request to add the subject to the agenda. So please, uh, limit your comments to that. Member Saliga Ponco?
I just want to mention, thank you Chair Grover, um, that we follow state statute, we follow past practice, and we follow Robert's Rules of Order last, and according to what you said, um, Chair Grover, um, because it was voted on in January and, uh, Member Johnston was not part of the prevailing vote, this cannot be brought up. That's my understanding. Thank you.
Yes, that is, that is my understanding also, and that is my ruling. Member Cameron?
I just want to reiterate what Member, uh, Placo just said, um, and also state that Member Johnston mentioned community members and various letters, and according to Minnesota statute, citizens do not have a right to remove board members, it is, um, a board decision.
Thank you, Member Cameron. Member Johnston?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you for those items. Uh, make it very clear that I'm not asking for the chairperson's removal as a board member, I'm only, uh, serving our rights as a board here to elect our officers. Uh, board officers can resign at any time, and they can be reelected at any time. As far as the other members stating that I don't have a right to do this, I think the member is mixing up reconsideration. This is not a reconsideration. Reconsideration only applies at the day that the motion was passed, we're talking about a new issue here, and there's absolutely nothing wrong. And, uh, also the chairperson's comment that we can't talk about the substance, but only talk about the technicality. When you're appealing a chair, you can talk about the substance and why we're doing it, and this is, everything is in order. Not only to have the discussion, but to have a, uh, vote, or to have this on the agenda item, and proceed with this.
Member Johnston, would you please turn your light out when you're done speaking, please? Are you done speaking? Thank you. Member Saliga Ponco?
Chair Grover, I would like to move our meeting along.
Okay.
I think that this is-
I think it's time to vote on the count. What's on the floor is, I, I asked, the chair moved that, uh, motion to add removal of the chair from the position of chair, be added to the agenda. I ruled that out of order, and that is the issue under discussion. Member Johnston, this will be your last time to speak to this.
Uh, no, it won't be my last time to speak. Uh, we have a right to speak in a board meeting, and you cannot cut me off because you, and only you can cut off debate as having a vote to cut off debate. At this point, there is not a vote because debate is continuing.
I'm gonna call for a vote now, since everyone has, seems to have addressed the issue. All those in favor?
I have to vote as for cutting off debate, are you voting on, uh, my appeal?
Member Johnston, we are voting on your appeal.
Well, you have to vote on cutting off debate first, otherwise it's a total illegal procedure to add to the multiple list of illegal procedures that you've conducted here.
Member Johnston, I have the obligation as chair to move this meeting along, and I'm doing so now.
I appeal the decision of the chair not to have a vote on the debate.
That's out of order, there's already an, an appeal on the floor.
I have, uh, an appeal, uh, point of order.
Member Johnston, you are out of order. We are going to vote on the-
Uh, the chairperson does not know how to run this meeting and cannot duck it until he can, that's why we've asked for a new chairperson, so we can finally conduct a meeting according to proper rules of order.
Member Johnston?
To do that, we have to have a vote on cutting off debate, and if you don't have the vote, this will go to the attorney general's office.
Member Johnston, will you cease and desist? We are going to move this meeting?
Uh, I'm calling a point of order, this is a legal procedure, I'm calling a censure of the chairperson, I'm asking for a censure of the chairperson. I'd like to point out here to the board that the recess was, and since this board meeting is still going on, the board meeting was not adjourned.
This board meeting is in recess.
It is not in recess, uh, it was a legal procedure. I was asked for the opinion from the attorney, present there how to recess a meeting, and at this, the meeting is still going on, we're still in session. Uh, should we go forward with the agenda?
Would you like me to appoint you as acting chair, Mr. Johnson?[541.79]
Uh, Member Johnston tried to do the exact same thing to put this on the agenda and it was voted down. We just, it's the same thing over and over. And I'd like to point out that many minutes haven't been spent on this agenda. I think we need to move on and approve the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
Uh, one more comment before we have a vote on this item here is that yes, we had it there. All I'm asking here is to have a discussion. I'd like to have this board tell the city of Duth that they're not going to have a hearing on closing schools. Do the right thing for a change and fess up to what's happening here. Uh, that's what I'm asking for and this is, uh, was, we haven't even got to this, having a discussion. That's why we would like to have one, to follow the state law.
Member Lawson?
Chair Grover, as in the past, we have always followed state law. As you have stated, we will be putting this out to the public sometime in the 2010-2011 school year, probably sometime after the first of the year, as this school district has done many, many, many different times over the past many, many, many years. There is nothing that says that we have to do it right now. We are not going to do it in a two-week period. We have talked to principals. Principals have testified before us that when they get an early start, it just helps with the transition into another building. Being that we have just completed the big fill and everyone knows where they're going, I would suspect that when this time comes, it will be an easier process.
All right. We're going to vote on adding the subject of school closures to the agenda. All those in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
No. That fails three to four with Members Glass, Casper, and Johnston voting in affirmative. Member Johnston?
Yes, I also sent the item on Aug., uh, August the 2nd to be included in the agenda. I was asking for the resignation of the superintendent. I am making motion to add that to the agenda.
And I'm going to move that out of order also. I checked with counsel and, uh, school, uh, public bodies shall, quoting from statute, "Public bodies shall close one or more meetings for preliminary consideration of allegations or charges against an individual subject to his authority." It would not be appropriate to have this on tonight's agenda. It would violate law and furthermore, there have been no allegations or charges made. So I am ruling that out of order.
Uh, there has been charges made, violation of my advisor opinion 10-105 on the Minister, Department of Administration, reference to the teacher's contract, the way it was negotiated illegally and passed on July 20th by this board. Uh, there was no sharing of fiscal information in a timely manner prior to the Board Resolution B. 710-2794 and 2796 for a tax levy of 2.5 million on, uh, July 20th. Uh, that was, not only that, uh, that was a violation.
Member Johnston, we're not, we're not going to discuss this in public. If you have a, if you have a seri-, uh, an allegation or a series of allegations or charges that are of such a serious nature that they would warrant the action that you, you request, I suggest you put them in writing and submit, uh, submit them through channels for consideration of a closed session. But we are not going to go into that discussion this evening. Member Salika Pankow?
Thanks Chair Grover. Let's just vote on the agenda. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to add the resignation of the superintendent to the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
No. That fails two to five with Members Glass and Johnston voting yes. Anything further? Any other items for discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That carries five to. Next item on the agenda is reading an approval of minutes. First, the regular school board meeting of July 20th.
So moved.
Thank you, Members Salika Pankow for moving approval, seconded by Members Cameron. I did want to point out on page 10, on vote on the resolution on the, uh, to approve the contract with the DFT, it was passed 4-0 with three abstentions and there's no indication that any of the abstaining board members had any kind of a conflict of interest and they need to know for the record and the public should know for the record that an abstention in these, in this situation is, has the same effect as a no vote. Member Glass?
Yes. Are you asking me to put that in the minutes or is this a statement?
No, I'm just saying that for, as a matter of point of, point of information. Yeah. Um, Member Glass?
Yes, I, uh, I have the, the time to look over the minutes for the June 15th meeting, which we approved at the last meeting and that approval is on page three, uh, that talks about approving the minutes for June 15th and there were no corrections or changes at that time. And since that time, I have seen a number of things, some of which are fairly important. I could, uh, tell you about them now or I could tell you about them later or we could amend the, uh, the minutes.
You're talking about our June minutes?
The June 15th minutes that we're going to.
Those have already been approved and made permanently.
Okay, so are you not, you, you're not wanting to know a major error that was in them?
What, what was the error?
Uh, there was a complete substitution of, uh, the wording for one of the resolutions that was passed and also the member that read the resolution was erroneously identified. It was, uh, Resolution 2762.
There was a substitution of a resolution. Was it then passed?
It, the substitution was not passed. The original in a board book is the one that was passed and that was not properly reported in the minutes.
Why don't you communicate that to, uh, Melinda Tebow in writing afterwards and let her investigate that? But those minutes, as it stands, those minutes are permanently, they, they were approved last month, so they are, they are approved. If there's something that warrants it, I would guess we can reopen and correct those, but, uh, it would not be appropriate to do that during the meeting tonight.
So you were aware of this, this?
I don't know what you're referring to, but I don't think I need to be right now.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's intriguing, but now is not the place to go into the discussion on it. All right. Member Johnston?
I'd like to ask an opinion of the attorney if, uh, if a resolution was passed and in the minutes it appears differently and has been changed, what is the legality of that resolution?
I, I, I just, I just suggested, Member Johnston, and I don't want to bring our, uh, counsel into this right now since we haven't had a chance to review the issue. So let's, let's not, uh, spend any time on that during this meeting tonight since we don't, none of us, with possible exception of you and, and, and Member Glass, I don't know if you and Member Johnston know what it is specifically, but anyway, at, at any rate, the bottom line is that is not part of tonight's action. We have a motion to approve, we can, we can look into that, but not during this meeting tonight. We have a motion to appro-, approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting of July 20th. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Member Johnston?
Yes, I have another, uh, correction. Page three, it states that, uh, the board took a brief recess. The board did not take a brief recess. That was illegally conducted. I want to point out here that the minutes should show that that recess was not properly conducted, as was today, of course. And I'd like that correction in the minutes. There was no recess taken.
Actually, there was a recess. It was, it's a matter of fact that there was a recess. The only thing lacking in the minutes is more specificity on the reasons for the recess, which I think we can, uh, we can get by without. So the minutes are correct as written.
Uh, the minutes are incorrect. Uh, there was not a recess taken. If you go back and look at the DVD, uh, there was no, uh, second to the motion, there's no vote on it. And consequently, the motion was illegal.
There was no motion to, there was no motion for a recess. The chair has the authority to call a recess at any time.
I would suggest you look up the rules of order there sitting on your desk.
Member, Member Johnston, do you have anything, any further?
Oh, yes, I do.
Corrections?
Uh, going back, you mentioned on page nine about, uh, the vote that was taken. First of all, I'd like to point out that informally, before you get to the minutes, or the statement you made previously is completely wrong. Uh, votes, uh, that people, this had nothing to do with this vote because it was illegal in the first place. Uh, people can abstain for a vote. Abstentions are not no votes. I would suggest, again, you read your rules of order on that. Going back to the minutes in particular here, uh, the vote taken was improper, was a violation of our rules of order and our bylaws and therefore the contract was not legally approved. The minutes should reflect that this contract was not, uh, legally approved.
The minutes will not reflect that because the minutes were leg-, uh, the contract was legally approved by a majority vote of the, of the board. Uh, Member Glass?
Uh, yes, we have two resolutions, uh, for the sale of bonds. Both of those say that the board shall meet on August 17th to, uh, to consider the bids. Uh, are we meeting today for that purpose? Or is this, is this a date wrong?
Do you want to address that, Mr. Hanson?
Uh, Chair Grover, members of the board, uh, Member Glass is correct. That was part of the, uh, resolution that was passed previously. Uh, we continue to prepare for that sale. Uh, we weren't prepared, uh, to do it today and so in the interests of, uh, a more efficient process, we put it off until the month of September and we'll come back to you at that point in time, uh, with the, uh, with the, uh, bond sale as, uh, put before you before.
Member Johnston?
Uh, first of all, I'll comment on if the board refuses to acknowledge their illegal procedure, I will, I will, I will, uh, follow procedures through that and make sure that the board starts following procedures. Uh, I do have several other corrections.
Go ahead.
First of all, I would suggest that the board, following procedure would be a lot easier than having to go through a big, uh, uh, hearing to whether or not the hearings are done. You have the vote in front of you, once you follow it. Uh, back on page 14, there was, uh, missing, there was a, uh, motion that was out of order. I made a motion to appeal that decision and it was seconded by, by Member Glass and that is not indicated in the minutes. The motion to appeal was what was seconded. We also has included a motion to amend and we also had an appeal that was made and seconded and that is not indicated in the minutes. Should have occurred, uh, that should be indicated after, about in the middle, it says, "Member Johnston appealed Grover Chair's decision." Should say that that was also seconded by Member Glass. Uh, there is several other items here. These are pretty minor items, but since we're talking about, uh, minutes, uh, does seem like there does seem to be lots of problems with the minutes here. Uh, one of the problems is numerous situations, I counted at least seven. Uh, um, it was indicated that, that, uh, the, the chairperson of the business committee is Member Watson, but yet it was indicated as Member Cameron. That should be corrected to mention that it was Member, uh, Watson, not Cameron, that introduced, uh, about seven instances. I'd also like to point out another error here that again, uh, this board has, was adjourned improperly. I'm pointing that out here again, uh, I don't care that whether it was that, but I'm suggesting here that the board start following its, uh, rules and start adjourned meetings and having recesses properly. That's as simple as following the rules and it's, uh, easier to follow rules than not.
Member Salika Pankow?
Chair Grover, I just want to point out that we have been into this meeting for 33 minutes and we still have not approved the agenda. And I've been keeping track of the amount of minutes that Member, um, Johnston has been speaking and it's the majority of the time. So I think we need to move on and approve the agenda, please. Or the minutes, I'm sorry.
Let's go ahead and vote on the July 20th minutes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Carries five to. Next is the minutes of the special school, uh, school board meeting, excuse me, of August 9th. Motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
By Member Cameron. Any discussion on these minutes, Member Glass?
No.
All right. All, all those in favor of the minutes as published, say aye? Aye? Opposed, say no? Those are approved unanimously. That brings us to public comment on the agenda as audience. Um, Member Johnston, would you, uh, get the list of anyone signed up to speak over there? Uh, reminder to the, those, those who have signed up to speak to limit your comments to three minutes. Please focus on issues and policies, uh, not individuals, whether they be elected board members or others. Limit your comments to three minutes. Gordon Downs?
I felt obligated to come to this meeting tonight because I was at last month's meeting and I couldn't believe my eyes or my ears what happened at that meeting. And I thought for sure I'd get into the Duth News Tribune the next morning. There wasn't a peep in there about the problems we had at the board meeting. Of course, you all know the Tribune is kind of pro-red plan and pro-school board, so anything negative in there is going to be hard to find. Getting back to why I'm here, I've been at quite a few city council meetings, county board meetings, Proctor City Council meetings, where the people are civil and they'll let the people talk back and forth. And this is the first meeting I've been to in my life where the board got up and left. Left the audience sitting out there. They just got up and left, just like a bunch of five-year-olds. And if that's the way you're going to act, that's the way you're going to be treated as five-year-olds. I just couldn't believe it. Your job is to talk to the public like the public talk to you. Now, sometimes the public might not agree with your plan or agree with certain individuals on the board in the gestating facts of what they've said. And, uh, Mr. Grover says they don't have to listen to comments that are against the board's policy or that are against board members. So in the future, every time somebody comes up here to speak against the board or what they're doing or board members, and you're going to leave the premises, just get up and leave, which Mr. Grover did, Mr. Dixon did, and all the ladies did because they always do what Grover, Mr. Dixon tells them to do. And I, that's the most disgusting thing I've ever seen.
Thank you, Mr. Downs. Lauren Martell, followed by Sharon Witherspoon.
Another nice late evening, lost from my garden. People ask me why I'm doing this and I tell them that I just felt the time had come to try to make a stand here in my own backyard against this troubling trend of more and more community decisions being made in boardrooms instead of voting booths, of more and more government officials colluding with big business to hatch up plans that are sweet deals for shareholders while the people lose their money and their rights. A lot of glitz, big fancy buildings with atriums, a lot of clever, slippery corporate lawyers speak. These are the kinds of things that are often used to mask the millions invariably pilfered from the people in these deals. This deal robs $4 million a year from the core of this city's educational system, targeted specifically at teachers in programming, and transfers that $4 million dollars every year for the next 20 years to the pockets of JCI's shareholders. It is hard to see the best side of people who would lock us into such a Faustian bargain with a zeal so unyielding they won't even bend on a civility code. But in truth, there was never any real need to make a big show about a code anyway. The people of this town have been amazingly civil. They've been amazingly constrained, considering they had their votes stolen and at least a quarter of them were outright lied to. They should be able to come up to this podium and show some passion, but they find themselves constricted, censored, with exaggerated accusations of incivility, vague references to past practice and a trumped-up claim of improper venue. They've been told continually that they can't talk about this or they can't talk about that, but I believe nothing should be off limits as long as they stay within reasonable constraint. The people should be free to talk about anything their elected representatives have said or done that affects the future of their city. I believe that this is indeed the proper venue and I have every right to ask this question. What kind of example does it set for the children of this school district to have the representative head of the district, the citizen head, the chair of the school board harboring several false statements to his constituents on the public record? And what kind of corrosive effect are those statements having on the harmony and well-being of this community? And finally, does he not feel some obligation to the people who have been hurt by his lies?
Thank you, Members, Mr. Martell, Sharon Witherspoon.
I am, I wasn't prepared to speak and I told my friend that I wasn't going to speak, but I'm compelled to rise to the occasion to say that I'm here on behalf of the children and that we need to do something. I will be so glad when the board can work through their dysfunction and passionately address closing the education gap as much as we're clo-, as much as we're discussing Robert's Rules of Order. I'm so tired of hearing about Robert's Rules of Order. What about educating our kids? The other issue that I want to address is the fact that I read in the paper about, um, uh, a hire that was going to be up at Central. I'm not for sure that it's on the agenda, but I want to rise to the occasion to say that I speak on behalf of the people of the color that we are totally against that hire. And also, I do not feel like the two, uh, citizens that spoke prior to me, I feel that I can come before you and discuss anything. Now, whether I'm heard or whether actions are taken, that's, uh, that's, that's different because sometime I don't think so. But nonetheless, I'm still able to come and express the way that I feel and I respect all of you. Mr. Johnson, you are something else. And that's all that I have to say. And, and it's okay, I mean, it's okay to be disagreeable, but I've never seen anyone can go on and on and on and on. And so I'm just saying, excuse me, sir, I didn't interrupt you. That I, that I, and if I spoke out of order, I do apologize. But I don't work all day and run to this meeting and come and sit and listen to this. I could have worked tonight, but I am cons-, I made a promise to my people and to the children that I will attend every school board meeting possible and I would like for you to take care of business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Witherspoon. That concludes our public comment portion of the agenda. Uh, next is Superintendent Dixon with Communications and his report.
Uh, members of the board, as indicated in the agenda, there were three written communications since our last meeting. Uh, they really deal with, again, most of them deal with the long-range facility plan and some opinions about those things as you, as indicated, uh, in the minutes. As far as the superintendent report tonight, it's brief. As you know, this is August. It's a time for gearing up and making sure that school gets off to a, a quality start and so staff is working very hard across the district to make sure all the fine details at this point are taken care of and that's what we're spending our time on, making sure that all of our positions are filled, uh, talking about our transportation systems, uh, looking at where students are enrolled, trying to get as much information as we can about those students. Uh, are they still in the district? Have they changed their mind where they're going to school? Uh, making sure all textbooks are distributed to the buildings and teachers will have all those new math materials. It's been quite a process this summer, there's just hundreds of boxes have come in of math materials, uh, and, uh, uh, that's an important piece of the process. Uh, we did today also, uh, to bring you up to date, we did have a groundbreaking today for Lincoln Park Middle School, uh, this afternoon. Uh, a wonderful turnout, a lot of people were present. We got to hear, uh, the importance of that site and the importance of that building to parents, to staff, to community members, uh, and I, and it was a gorgeous day, um, today, uh, out there. Uh, the weather was wonderful as, as it is right now and, and so it was a wonderful day to have that groundbreaking ceremony. So we move forward on all projects there, as you know, and, uh, we're really excited about getting school started and when we see you again, we'll update you how the first few weeks of school went.
Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, Member Glass?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Dixon, Dr. Dixon, could you, uh, enlighten us a little bit about some of the elementary schools that, one of which I've heard that we are planning to have class sizes as high as 35? Tell me that's not true and, uh, and if it is, why?
First of all, we'll continue to monitor every, we get reports, uh, as school begins daily from every, uh, school in the district. We'll continue to monitor those as the first few weeks go by. We hold some staffing, uh, as well to make, to allocate, uh, to those kinds of situations as they come up, uh, and, and, uh, certainly it's not our goal to have those kinds of class sizes in elementary and if we have those, we'll be working with those principals to see what we can do. Part of the challenge we have right now in all of our schools is simply lots of times we have students come in and register during the summer. Uh, but we also have students that have registered somewhere else during the summer and we don't know about that yet. Uh, and sometimes we do because maybe that school has already notified us and sent for records, but in lots of cases, we don't know that until the, uh, the day school starts and then for the next couple of weeks, we're trying to identify where those students went. So it takes some times to even this out. As you know, in the past, we've continued to update the board and give you information on all those class sizes across the district. We'll do the same this year, uh, as we get into this. We also know this year, there may be more transition. If you remember last year, particularly at the elementary level relative to the magnet schools, when we surveyed those parents, uh, a lot of them said, "Well, we're, we're going to provide our own transportation and stay at their respective schools." Uh, you know, and, and we'll have to see if school starts, if that holds true. You know, sometimes you can say that and then a few days into school, you say, "Wow, this idea of, of running my son or daughter to school every day isn't quite as easy as I thought and I'd like to go back to my neighborhood school." And so we're, we're thinking that there may be more of that than usual this year, uh, particularly also with the construction around town. I think it's going to make it harder for some parents to get their students around town than maybe normally we would have. So all we can do is, uh, keep monitoring that information, check it on a daily basis as we do and try to make good decisions with the staffing and the, that we have.
So would, excuse me, would it be appropriate to tell those parents that, that said they registered their, their child at this school and there's now more than 35 kids in the class or they're thinking of taking the child somewhere else, that, that the rule of 35 isn't, isn't going to be continued? That they, they should look forward to that that class would, would be downsized to something like 25 or whatever the rule is for, that we're, we're honoring for this year's elementary school? I mean, I don't like people acting on, on these type of rumors if in fact, we've got a policy that says, uh, that the average class size will be, uh, some number less than 35 so that they don't make a decision based on that. They don't go to a different school or a charter school because they've heard that their kid's going to be in a class with, of more than 35. If we're going to make a change that's going to reduce that number the month later, I'd just as soon have them know that now than, than take their kid out of school and, and know it later. So can you offer any, any suggestions as to what the rule might be?
I think I just, I believe I just offered the process we'll go through. There's no absoluteness we can guarantee in anything, but if you said, "Is administration supporting an elementary class size of 35?" No, we would take that seriously and think what we could do about that. And that's what I can offer at this point. There are limited resources. I was going to add, however, if you've been following federal legislation, that there's been some recent legislation federally, as late as last week, that is get, looking to get money to states and then to local school districts. Uh, and, uh, we're excited about that. It's one-time money for this year and we're going to be monitoring that right now on a daily basis because, um, it, in short, if, uh, depends on the governor, but if he's willing to act immediately, then the money can get here fairly soon. If, uh, if he doesn't act, then, uh, in the provisions of the law that was passed federally, uh, they did have a statement in there that if governors refuse to take the money, then the, the federal government would bypass the- government would bypass the governor and allocate the money through another process. That will take longer to get that money, but it's intended to be used during this coming school year. We were having some discussions today about that. I would love to see the governor act soon and try to get that money to the state as quickly as possible so we can make decisions sooner about what we might do about that. So you need to know that's in the works. That's good news. We know there's going to be some. We don't know enough detail right now. We know that some may also be tied to special education needs. That's not unusual from a federal allocation, so we're going to have to play that out. We're not sure at this point if the federal government allocates it versus the state, if it will be done based on Title I and therefore only Title I schools can use the money. We have heard if the state allocates it, they will allocate it to districts on a per pupil basis, which probably means less strings attached. So we're working through all that right now, and so the question becomes, as school starts, I asked the question today, knowing that, could it be reasonable to add a little more at the start, even though we may not have all those answers at the start? It may take months to figure this out, but, so that's another wrinkle in this. So keep informed and stay tuned as we get more information, hopefully yet this week, in fact, in terms of what the state is planning to do.
Member Casper?
Along that line, I have a couple of questions for you, Dr. Dixon. A few months ago, you had stated when we were, when the allocation of human resources was being made, you were holding out, I believe, four to five positions. Has those been chosen, and are they in place yet, or are we still holding on to that? I'll let you finish, answer that, and then I have a couple of other questions for you.
No, we're still holding those. We generally don't do that till about the first or second day of school when we can actually see. It's easier to add than it is to try to go back and then take away from a school and move it somewhere else, so we usually wait until that very first few days to make decisions about that.
So some of the teachers that we unfortunately had to lay off may potentially still be able to come back into the district into some of those positions. Okay. Secondly, I would like to make a formal request that by our next education committee meeting, if we can have those class numbers as close as possible, both by school and by grade, as far as the total number of kids, as close as we can, and I know it's just a few days after school starts, so that's a lofty request, and I understand if we can't, but I'd like to understand how many kids we're serving during this school year. So if at all possible, by our education committee meeting. And then thirdly, I was building a playground today, and this is along these lines, so I'm going to allow for, ask for a little leeway here. Building a playground out in Morgan Park today, working with a bunch of volunteers right across the street from the Morgan Park Middle School, and talking with many community members who are out giving up their day to build this playground to improve their community. And one of the folks from that community came and talked to me, and he's been involved in education for many years, and he had some concerns for me about some of my positions, and I listened because that's what I have to do, and I'm willing to do that, but he also expressed a concern there were seven kids watching the playground be built, and six of those seven grade school kids go to, and they live in the Morgan Park area, go to other school districts. Several of them go to Renshall because a bus comes in from Renshall, and the others go to Hermantown. And that concerned the person I talked to, and that greatly concerns me, and we looked at each other and said, "We need to do something about that." That six of the seven kids that were watching this playground be built in anticipation of getting to play on it live in our community and choose to go to school in another community. And my hope is that we as a board and we as a community can get beyond this contentious time and get beyond our differences and, as Ms. Wetherspoon eloquently stated, concentrate on kids, because that was a very glaring example of, to me, of where we might have let somebody down. So my hope is that as we move forward and as we tackle these issues, that we can deal with those things and return those kids to the community where they're growing up as far as education. So, thank you.
Member Watson?
I just want to express to Member Casper and others that in the past, the Assistant Superintendent's Office does do weekly updates for our, by school, by grade, so that we will be kept in the loop for quite some time prior to and during the start of the school year, and I really appreciate that. And I know this isn't time for commentary, but while I hate to hear that kids in our area are going elsewhere, I also think it's a good time for us to say, "Come on back. We're doing everything right, and we've got everything that it takes to really educate kids to their highest potential."
Well, this is under superintendent comment.
That's why I called on you. You get the last word.
Well, along that line, I have to say, first of all, I've said all along, we do offer a high-quality, robust curriculum, first of all, and I would ask anyone to compare what we offer in terms of curriculum to any school district around us. Just pull the course description guide for any high school in the neighbor, around us, or any middle school or elementary, and lay them out side by side objectively, and tell me who has the greatest scope and the greatest depth of curriculum, number one. And I think the last thing to say is, I have to say I was really offended by the cartoon in the newspaper.
Thank you.
All right? The fact of the matter is, the bread and butter of this school district are teaching staff and what they do every day. We have, as you know, yes, we have areas we need to improve, as every school district does. You know, the challenge is under No Child Left Behind. The owner is piece of that law. But the reality is, and we're not saying we're perfect, but the reality is, students in Duluth Public Schools get a high-quality education. You know that. This community knows that, and I think that was a gross misrepresentation of what's going on in terms of teaching and learning in this school district, and so I just want to end with that. I'm proud of our staff. I'm proud of the curriculum. I'm proud of what we're doing. We try to share our information openly and honestly. We try to use that information in terms of how to improve and try to help make this system better, and that's fundamentally what continuous improvement's about. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. The next item on the agenda is Report of Standing Committees. First, the Education Committee. Chair of that committee is Member Saliga-Ponco.
Thanks, Chair Grover. Just one quick comment I have to make with the superintendent's comments about our curriculum. We have an incredible school district, and you see all these teachers working really hard, and I'm so impressed with the kids that come out of this district, that graduate and are involved in many activities, you know, whether it's music or athletics. We have all of it. You know, there is no other district close to us that even has, can even compare, so I really am proud of that, too. And we have a lot of kids that come in here from other districts, too. Okay, this is the Education Committee. Sorry, I had to get that little thing in there. I was kind of excited after going to the groundbreaking today. We had a couple of informational presentations. Online standards-based elementary report card update, adequate yearly progress, and MCA, two science test results from '09-10, which, you know, it's hard to even read some of those results, just what they, they don't always tell accurate. And then we have informational items. Do not require school board approval grant applications. We have none. The Internet use regulations, and we receive that as informational. Video security, we had a discussion on that. Student transfers, receive this item as informational. And action items. Number one, we have the articulation agreement between the SDC and the Art Institute's International Minnesota, and it's recommended that Duluth School Board accept and approve this item. And I'm going to skip the resolution and come back to that, if that's all right, Chair Grover. Okay. CNN Policy 5060, collection, maintenance, and dissemination of student records and information. It's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve revisions to Policy 5060, collection, maintenance, and dissemination of student records and information for the first reading. D is New Policy 3188, video security other than on buses, and it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve New Policy 3188, video security other than on buses for the first reading. There are no extended trip requests. F, access to Internet student data, non-district employees. It's recommended that Duluth School Board accept and approve this item. And then we have diplomas. The following students have completed all high school requirements and should be awarded a diploma. Benjamin Darling, Connor Bishop, Larisha Johns, Mark Peoples, and Nikki White. Congratulations to those five individuals. It's recommended that we approve them. And then I'm going to go back to Resolution B, and that's on page 34, which I hit that marked off here. Acceptance of Grant Awards Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressing the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And I'm just going to read them. One is the U.S. Department of Education, Terrence Smith, Director of Indian Education, and the project title is 2010 Indian Education Formula Grant, Title VII, and the amount is $147,617. Funds from this grant award will be used to support the positions of the Director of Indian Education, the Indian Education Department Secretary, Advocates, and Travel and Supplies. And then we have two, Minnesota Department of Education, Deborah Wagner, Homeless Youth Coordinator, McKinney Vento Education for Homeless Children Grant, and it's $75,000 funds from this grant award will be used to support homeless students district-wide with additional academic support, basic school supplies, fees, transportation, and family support in the community. I move Resolution E-8-10-2804 dated August 17, 2010.
Thank you, Member Saliga-Ponco. Is there a second to the resolution?
Second.
Seconded by Member Glass. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. That's approved unanimously. Did you want to move the remainder of the report?
I move the rest of the education report.
Okay. Thank you, Member Saliga-Ponco. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Member Watson. Items to be withheld, I have one, which is 3C. Member Casper?
1B.
1B, that's on the first page there?
Yes.
All right. Anything else, Member Casper? Member Johnston?
Did I hear 2D already?
Nope.
Okay, 2D.
2D, all right. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. First one is 1B, Member Casper.
Yes, Dr. Lake, I had asked at the Education Committee meeting if you could provide a breakdown of the graph that you provided, the science results for ethnicity, if you could provide a breakdown of where, we tested three different grades, and this is just a broad view of where we're at, if by those tested grades, if we could see where the district, if our numbers start at a young age, or if they start to, if the problem becomes greater as the kids get older. So I'd asked for that, and I was hoping you could provide that for me at some time, so...
The information that you requested last Tuesday was, this morning at 6:00 a.m., delivered and will be in the Friday packet. Okay.
Next item withheld was on the second page, that's 2D. Member Johnston?
Yeah, I've had several comments back to me about the, one concern, the only concern I've got on 2D is the magnet schools and many people concerned about the three magnet schools not continuing and concerned about those policies, and this seems to chisel out in stone, and consequently, I'd have to vote against this, and I would request this be have a separate vote on this one.
I guess, I guess, Member Johnston, I guess we can, when we vote, when we vote on the rest, on this report, we are voting to accept that as an informational item. It's not really an action item, but I guess there's no reason why you can't vote against accepting it. So did you have additional discussion on that? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on item 2D. Again, it's a regulation, which is just informational from administration, but no, we don't need a second for that, so... All those in favor of accepting as informational, Regulation 5040, our student transfers, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, that is approved, 6-1, with Member Johnston voting no. All right, so that has been already acted on, and that item. The other item withheld was me on the third page, it's under action items, item C, Policy 5060, collection, maintenance, and dissemination of student records and information. I don't know if I missed something at the Education Committee meeting. It wouldn't be the first time, but all the changes were taken out of the material that was published in the final agenda. Was that intentional? It's on page 39. There's no changed information in there except in the title of the section of the policy. Would that be considered a typographical error, and the language that was, went out for the committee's consideration is supposed to be there?
You're correct. It's missing.
Okay.
And I don't know why.
Okay. I think procedurally, what we need to do probably is have a motion to add that language back in, if anyone's willing to do that, and this is, this is first reading, right? Yeah, first reading. Could we have a motion to add that language back in, and then the minutes will have to be, have to be sure to reflect that. So, Members Saliga-Ponco, you want to move to do that?
From what we had last week?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's, just gave it a little cleaner procedurally, let's go ahead, and if we have a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Member Cameron, let's go ahead and vote on this one separately then. All those in favor, well, that's an amendment to the published item. I think we can just leave it at that, and then it'll be part of the report. So all those in favor of amending item, the 5060 policy change, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that corrected language is back in there then? Yes?
For the record, I think what happened was that the changes were made in red, and I think that when the report got amended, it was red, then it picked up.
It actually looks like it might be there.
Oh, okay, yeah, now that, I can see some splotchiness there, but I don't think that would pass court test or something, so I think we... Okay. Okay, we'll blame the technology, but we still need to correct it. Okay, thank you, Melinda. I appreciate that. All right, so that item is as it was originally presented then, and there were no other items withheld, so let's go ahead and vote on the remainder of the report. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. That's approved unanimously. And that brings us to the HR report.
This is the Human Resources Committee report for August 17, 2010. Under certified appointments, we have five. Under certified co-curricular, we have two. We all received information, eliminating one name on that item. Certified extensions, there are 15. Under certified leaves, there are three. We also received information explaining the resend item. Under certified long-term sub, there's one. Under certified summer school, there are 14. We also received information adding two names. On the non-certified appointments, there is 11. Non-certified demotions, there's five. Non-certified extensions, there's five. A non-certified leaves, there's one. There are 44 non-certified permanent decreases, 11 non-certified permanent increases, eight non-certified promotions, one non-certified rec... Increases, eight Non-Certified Promotions, one Non-Certified Reexamination, four Non-Certified Retirements, and three Non-Certified Summer School. I'm going to move right into the action items. 2A is Approval of the Individual Contract Between Melissa Burrell and Minnesota Alliance with Youth, and I move that for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Members Saliga-Ponco. Is there any discussion on that contract? Member Johnston?
Going through the, the contract there was confusing to me, what exactly this person or these people are doing, and could you explain that real briefly?
Okay. Go ahead, whoever wants to take that.
Uh, Member Johnston, the Minnesota Alliance with Youth is an agency that we host here. It's independent from the school district, but we are the third-party administrator for their, you know, they utilize our systems, and for that, they, they pay us and compensate us for doing that. As a result, we run their items, such as this contract, through the school board, even though they have been independently approved by their own board prior to when you see them. And again, we house them here, they pay us compensation for the space that they have, and the computer systems and telephones that they use, and it works out to be a real good deal for both of us, actually. So, there, I would encourage you to think of them as a unique and separate entity from the school district.
Okay, seeing no more, lights on for discussion. All those in favor of the employment agreement regarding Melissa Burrell, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. That's approved unanimously. Member Cameron?
2C is also Approval of an Individual Contract Between Renee Anderson and the Minnesota Alliance with Youth, and I'd like to also move that for approval.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the contract regarding Sarah Dixon, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That's approved 7-0. Member Cameron, the next, next item?
Just a clarification, Member Grover, am I off here?
Which one did you just move?
I removed, I removed 2C, which is Renee.
I misstated what we are voting on.
And so did I, skipped 2B, so.
Let's back up then, and let's, let's, let's do this over. Is that acceptable to the board? Do you want to move the second contract, which is the Sarah Dixon one?
Yes, I will. 2B is Approval of an Individual Contract Between Sarah Dixon and the Minnesota Alliance with Youth, and I'd like to move that for approval.
All right. And that's seconded by Members Saliga-Ponco. Discussion? All those in favor of this contract, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That's approved 7-0. And then the next contract, the Renee Anderson one, you want to move that again?
Yes, it's also Approval of an Individual Contract Between Renee Anderson and the Minnesota Alliance with Youth, and I move that for approval. Second.
Seconded by Members Saliga-Ponco. Seeing no lights on for discussion, all those in favor of this contract, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That's approved 7-0. Member Cameron?
And our last action item is 2D, Approval of a GED Examiner at $20 an hour, and I'd like to move that for approval. Second.
Thank you, that's moved. And Member Cameron, seconded by Members Saliga-Ponco. Seeing no lights on for discussion, all those in favor of adding, approving this addition to the list, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That's approved unanimously.
And I'd like to move the remaining of the HR committee.
All right. Thank you, Member Cameron. Items to be withheld from the remainder of the report? Seeing none, or, Member Casper, I'm sorry?
It isn't actually a, a, an item to be withheld, it's more of a comment, so if I, I can do that now, or?
Yes.
All right. I want to publicly thank Mr. Ron Hagland for his, his efforts with the, the integration specialists. At his encouragement, we were encouraged to stop in yesterday and to meet some of the integration specialists yesterday afternoon, and I chose to do that, and I got to meet some of these, these well-qualified individuals who are very excited about being a part of ISD 709, so I want to, want to acknowledge Ron and his staff for their efforts, as well as the Human Resources staff for, for what appears to be highly qualified, highly motivated individuals that are, are excited to see the school year start, and excited to be a part of helping our kids be successful in school, so I wanted to acknowledge him as well as the HR staff, so.
Thank you, Member Casper. I'm sure, I'm sure that those comments are going to be much appreciated. These new employees have a challenging task ahead, ahead of them, and I think we've got some well-qualified people to take that on, so. And they've got, they've got good leadership in Mr. Hagland also, excellent leadership. All right, no further lights on for comments or questions, we'll go ahead and vote on the HR report, other than the action items that you've already acted on. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That's approved unanimously. Next is the Business Committee Report, Member Wasson.
This is the Business Committee Report for Tuesday, August 17, 2010. Number one is our financial report, number two are bids, RFPs, and quotes. Number three are policies and regulations, which we have none. Item four, there's some contracts. Item A has been pulled. B, there are change orders to Denfeld High School and Eastern High School, Piedmont Elementary. The item C, the placeholder, has been pulled, and then we move on to resolutions, and then informational items. At this point, would you like me to take the resolutions?
Yeah, let's do the resolutions, Member Wasson.
The first is Item B, 810-2806, the resolution relating to the issuance of bonds and calling an election thereon. Whereas on March 21, 2008, the school district received a petition calling for placing before the voters a question of whether the school board should be authorized to issue general obligation bonds totaling 1 million, 1,028, why can't I say that? 128 million to be used with an estimated 66 million, et cetera, in bonds and investment earnings previously approved by the board for alternative facilities to build two new middle schools and two new elementary schools, repair and remodel three high schools, one middle school, and five elementary schools, repair and expand two elementary schools, and repair and remodel Old Central High and Secondary Technical Center, and this goes on and on. I move B-810-2806.
Thank you, Member Wasson. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Saliga-Ponco. Is there a discussion on this resolution? Member Glass?
Yes, does this also include the ballot as part of this resolution?
Yes.
And so, there are some, some questions about the accuracy of the, of the ballot.
Now's the time to state your questions.
Okay, by voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. How was that statement originated?
Mr. Hanson?
Uh, basic premise of the, of the ballot question is whether or not 128 million in bonds should be sold, and as a result of that and the required payments for those bonds, then that would create a tax increase. I hope that answers your question.
Is that, that, that language, I believe, mandatory?
I'm sorry, in terms of having that statement at the bottom, yes, that's part of the statute.
Yeah, we have no choice. Yes.
So, even though the reality is where this plan and its funding was to be in comparison and in opposition to the RED Plan option, which would spend another $100 million, it seemed to me when we went into the funding of the plan, the development of the details, there was some question that, that we would actually have a, an overage in what we presently have or have expected for funding the RED Plan option, and so we'd be actually defeating the bonds that we have taken for the RED Plan, because this would be a lesser amount. So, are we going to try to communicate that, that this plan would actually cost less than the RED Plan option, and might in fact get a property tax refund?
Board members, I'll remind you, this plan does not cost less. It may be less in total dollars, but it's not less in tax impact, and you'll remember in the development of it, the reality is, it has to do with the amount of money that can, that's, you've got more schools staying open, you have less general fund dollars to go toward payment, and if you remember all of that, and the actual dollar value to the taxpayer was greater than the dollar value in the RED Plan, even though the principal amount is less. The fact that, that, that all that documentation remains the same that was approved by the Department of Education, it is a tax increase, and it's greater than the long-range facility plan. One of the obligations we have is we'll put all that information out as part of the process to inform the community on each piece of this operation.
I guess I understand those words, but they're inconsistent with, with the fact that, that this is a plan that would actually spend $100 million less money, and your, your math is coming up so that it's going to cost the taxpayers more. That's something that's, that is still in the, in the era of being unbelievable, and so we'll, we'll be working to try to, to sort that out in the, in the near future, I'm sure.
That wasn't my math, that was the math the consultant you guys supported in hiring to do the work that's out in this boardroom and told you that.
Member Johnston?
Yes, I'd like to make a correction also to what the superintendent just stated, quoting right out of the review and comment for the RED Plan as well as Plan B. Total tax burden of the RED Plan is 438 million, we've had some justice about lately. The total tax burden for Plan B is 311 at the full thing, on Phase 1, that's only 166 million. In other words, Plan B says either 127 million or 257 million. So, anybody says that this talks less, that's completely wrong, as written in black and white in the review and comment, and I've also seen information that has been given to the media concerning this, and is completely full of that misinformation, and I'm, and I am expecting that this be, that misinformation be corrected. And can I, can I be assured of that?
I will remind this board that I will present the information as put together in the long range in the Plan B and all the documentation, which shows the total dollars, principal interests, the tax impact, with all the assumptions that were done and approved by this board, sent to the department, and approved. That's what will be given to the public.
Member Johnston?
What's been given to the public, I've already assumed it's been given to the public, and that's wrong.
I'm not in agreement with it.
I would suggest here that this, this administration correct that. I think when we have an election coming up, I believe information must be correct, and if you can't get it correct, I will, we will help that. If we have to, we will go to the Department of Administration to correct those errors, and I think it's much better to do it right the first time, rather than being embarrassed by having hearings on this. I'm asking, and I would suggest if you don't get, you don't understand, that somebody talk to people that have objections, like myself, and try to get these numbers right. It's easy to put the right numbers out, it's wrong. I know this is a difficult situation already, where this thing has been delayed by the board for over two years, so we can, so this becomes almost a mute point, but let's not lie to our public, let's tell the truth. And I'm asking that for the administration here to do that, and if I keep seeing the information that's put out to the media that I've seen so far, there will be hearings here.
Members of the board, first of all, my administrative staff may always put out the factual information. I'm not going to sit here and say we're not telling the truth. The documentation that was presented, the documentation that was approved by the Department of Education will be what we put out. I'll remind the board that it is, Plan B is the responsibility of the school district, it was presented by the school district with the input already from the Plan B supporters, which included you, Mr. Johnson, and we will put out the information that was finally in the final document that was sent to the department for approval with no changes, with the financial packages that were approved by that, in that document as presented, and the tax impact as presented in that document.
Member Johnston?
It's thought that the information is inaccurate, it's what you omit, which is almost everything. The total tax burden is what we're worried about here, and that has never been put out by the district, and I'm requesting that the total tax burden, which I just stated, be put out, finally, to this town. And the information has been, and I believe, has been lacking, and I'm requesting that the total tax burden be put out on this information. Now, one place has been in your website, and is clearly stated in review and comments for both the RED Plan and Plan B, and I would certainly expect, not only expect, I insist that this total tax burden be presented to the people of Duluth finally. Is there any problem with presenting the total tax burden?
No, and it's what's in the document, which is an increase in the tax burden.
What's in the document, I just told you, we have, and the Plan B would say 257 million dollars. Never has this district put out the total tax burden, never.
Chair Grover?
Yes, Member Cameron?
The consultants that represented the proposal for Plan B presented right in this boardroom, and the tax impact was clearly stated, which there is an increase, and the reasons for it. Superintendent Dixon has already said that he will make all that information public. I do suggest to the media that you get all the information, including the report.
Study it for yourself.
The study from the consultants for Plan B, so that you have accurate information.
I'll remind them that I have that information.
Member Johnston? Did you want to speak?
Yes, I'd like to remind the media that I have that information, and that you would get, should get it from, and at least the other side of the question, this district has never given the other side, and information has been very misleading and inaccurate.
I would remind members of the board that it is administrations, not individual board members, function and role to present information to the public as part of a referendum process, and I have every faith based on experience that, that the information that they put forward in the, in the next two to three months will be accurate and straightforward and complete as it always has been. Members Saliga-Ponco?
Thanks, Chair Grover. You know, I am going to be voting for this. I, I do disagree with us even having to put this on, I recognize we have to, but I, I am very dismayed at the amount of money that we have wasted by doing this, between having to hire someone and then sending it to the department and then having to pay for an election. I think it's a huge waste of money that is being taken out of classrooms. I mean, it's probably been about four or five teachers' worth that we have had to spend on this. Actually, it's probably more than that, I don't even know. And I think about the amount of time that staff has had to waste with this, when we have such a wonderful plan that is almost done. In fact, being at that groundbreaking today for the Western Middle School, it was so just joyous, all the kids, the teachers, just community members, it was really wonderful. People are so excited about our plan. So, it frustrates me the fact that we have to put this on a ballot. It is a waste of time and money, but I will support it, because we have to. But I do know, I've seen the numbers, numbers do not lie as far as tax impact, so I think we should probably go on and vote, though. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of the resolution placing the Plan B referendum on the November 2 ballot, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That's approved, 6-1 with Member Glass voting no. Next resolution, Member Wasson?
This is a resolution, Authorized Student Activity Bank Account Signer at Homecroft, Susan Leenot from Bill Grandseth. I move Resolution B-810-2807.
Thank you, Member Wasson, seconded by Members Saliga-Ponco. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the Authorized Account Signers Resolution, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That's approved unanimously. Next resolution, Member Wasson?
The next resolution is authorizing the- The next resolution is authorizing the sale of vacant land Kensington property Lokeaton on West Arrowhead Road, whereas the school board by resolution B6072452 adopted a long-range facility plan for the district and therein also directed the district's administrative staff to commence with the disposition of certain non-school sites, including the Kensington property and so on. I move resolution B8102805.
Second.
Thank you, Member Watson, and seconded by Member Saliga Ponco. Member Casper?
Yes, a question for Mr. Leiter. Is this all of the property or a portion of the property?
Member Casper, Chair Grover, members of the board, this does not include a smaller parcel, approximately three acres of, of this total piece of property, which there is another interested buyer of the, that piece of property, potentially consolidated with some additional tax forfeit property.
Okay, thank you.
I would also offer to board members, since some questions were raised relative to this property, we do have as part of the purchase agreement, an addendum which includes the restriction on use consistent with board policy as board members ask the question. And we've achieved that and have it signed by the buyer in an agreement. I also completed some research that wasn't exhaustive, but it did provide some explanation as to the history of this property. It began back in 1959 where there was some tax forfeit property that the school board authorized administration to pursue an acquisition. It wasn't until 1967, when, at 62 through 67, where there was actually some transactions related to that, and it involved the Jefferson School, transfer of property to the Jefferson School, to the county for $10,000 plus this property. So there's, and I, and that was just a summary information I was able to retrieve from the school board archives up at the university.
Does that, that restrictive covenant, is that written so that it'll flow through to future purchasers of the property?
That's correct. It, it's the grantee and its successors are assigned.
Member Johnston?
What's the approximate size of the property and the assessed tax value?
Member Johnston, it's, it's approximately 38 acres total with, including the streets that are currently plotted in there. I have a worksheet here, unfortunately it didn't total it up, but I do have the individual parcels with the assessed value based on the land. There's no buildings on this property. So I would have to total those up, I don't have that number.
If you could get it to me later, I would appreciate it.
All right, I don't see any more lights on indicating discussion. All those in favor of the resolution for the sale of the vacant Kensington property land, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is approved 7-0. And that completes the resolutions, I believe, Member Watson? Do you want to move the rest of the report?
I would like to move the remainder of the business committee report.
Seconded by Member Saliga Ponco.
Are there any items to be withheld? Member Johnson, or excuse me, Member Glass?
1B.
Any more?
Yes, and all the bids where they were, the words, remains within the budgeted amount at this site are included.
Why don't you specify that for me, so I don't have to go looking through this?
Okay. So it's 2A123.
That's all the bids, all right. Anything further?
I'd like to vote separately on 4B1. And 2.
Is that, that's the Denfeld change order?
Yes, and the Eastern change order, dealing with asbestos abatement.
All right. Anything further?
No, but since there's more things involved in those, I guess it's a little bit messy. Why don't you just omit that last request?
Which one?
The, anything related to 4.
So that was, that was 4B1 and 2. You want, you're, you're not requesting anything on those?
Right.
All right. Anything further?
No.
All right, Member Johnston?
I didn't quite follow what Member Glass had pulled out, but I'd like to have a separate vote on 2A1. I thought was already, those were all pulled out?
Well, you pulled it, you didn't say necessarily a separate vote, but you would like a separate vote.
I would like to have a separate vote on 2A1.
2A1, all right. Any other items to be withheld?
Yes. 2B1. Separate vote on that.
2B1, the Voyager Bus Company contract?
Yes.
All right.
And I've understood 4B1 was pulled out for separate vote?
No, it wasn't. It was, but then it was sent back in, so.
Okay, I'd like to pull it all for separate vote.
Change order at Denfeld, correct?
Pardon?
Change order at Denfeld, all right. All right, anything else?
I'd like to have a discussion on 3B1, if that wasn't pulled out. 3, 3B3, excuse me, Piedmont Elementary School.
3B3?
Wait, no, it's not 3, I think it's 4.
Pardon me?
4B3.
Piedmont, excuse me. Piedmont contractor, all right. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Member Casper?
Yes, a question for Mr. Hanson. At a previous board meeting, I had made a request, we had a lively discussion regarding some of the votes regarding change orders and changes to the plan that I believe the total was about $25 million and changes. And I'd asked for some of the history of that, and both you and Dr. Dixon had assured me that I would be, as well as the rest of the board, would be getting that. And I, it's been a month or so, and I'm not asking for it today, but just asking if that's being worked on or where we are at with that, so.
I, my apologies, Member Casper, and we'll finish putting that together and get it out to you.
Thank you.
Member Johnston, did you have additional items to withhold? Okay, okay. Member Glass, item 1B, approval of payment of claims.
Yes, payment of claims, this month has Johnson Controls for the month of June being paid $369,500. And also for the Duluth News Tribune, $7,600. These are just for the month of June, and it's interesting to monitor the monthly changes, and those are the, the payments for last June for those two entities. Approximately $20 million were paid out last month under the payment of claims for all sources throughout the district.
All right. And, Member Glass, you can, you asked to withhold item 2A1, the bid on auditorium repairs at Denfeld.
Yes, I was curious about the last statement in that bid, which says, which remains within the budgeted amount at this site. And what my question is, is that the original budgeted amount or the revised budgeted amount? So when you use that term, does it, are you referring to the revised budgeted amount or the original budgeted amount?
Chair Grover, members of board, we're using the current budget amount that's approved by the board, recognized for this project. So it is within the current budgeted amount. I guess I'm not sure I understand the differentiation.
So that would be the amended budget that we pass on June 24?
I, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a clarification, if I'm recalling, wasn't June 24 a Thursday, committee of the whole meeting? I could be wrong on that.
I'm not sure if I'm.
So we didn't approve any revised budgeted?
Yeah, I'm not sure I recognize the date, but I know that there was a, a change, I believe, that there was, is that what it was being referenced?
I can see, we had a special board meeting that night.
We had a, it's the, it's our master sheet now that's presented to the board. I thought the day we did the committee was June 12th, but maybe not. But that's the master sheet that we're all using now in terms of, remember that whole sheet in terms of, that I went through with you in terms of budgets on every project and the totals?
Right, I believe that was, you had a meeting of the whole on?
I don't remember.
24th, followed immediately by a special board meeting to approve the amended RED Plan option.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe it was June 24.
Member Johnston, did you have questions on 2A1?
Were we going to have a vote, and that's when I asked for a vote?
Yeah.
Just to kind of make a comment, is that in order now?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to make a comment, I'd like to thank Mr. Leiter. He, he first got to go through the upper part of the auditorium in Denfeld, and I've been there, of course, many times since. The architectural neatness of the Denfeld auditorium is really amazing, the acoustics is also very amazing. And again, I'd like to, you know, comment Mr. Leiter and the school for the hard work they've done in the past on renovating that auditorium. It's really amazing, and I guess it'd just be one more step in that direction. And again, I'd like to comment to you and your staff for the amazing work that's been done renovating the Denfeld auditorium and bring it up to the wonder that it is.
Did you want a separate vote on this item, Member Johnston?
Yes, I would.
All right, I don't see any additional discussion on item 2A1, so we'll vote separately on that. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. That's passed 7-0. The next item withheld was the next item, a next bid, Western Middle School, Lincoln Park Middle School, bid 1184. Member Glass, or were you, was your question already answered, or?
Yes, already answered.
All right, thank you. And same thing with item 3, same question, thank you. And that brings us to RFP. Did you have a question on any of those, Member Casper?
Yeah, there was 2, that was 2A2, the.
Yes.
Yeah. I just had a question, I just noticed again, Mr. Leiter is bringing it up here as a little bit, we know, we've talked about this a lot, but I just wanted to point out that all the contractors for the Lincoln Middle Park School are all out of town contractors, and I was disappointed to see that. We kind of got some local contractors on that.
Okay. Member Glass?
Yes, that's the Lincoln Park School, and this is the bid, is this for the, this is not the roof yet. All of our roof bids are still open, right? They're going to be generally bid for all the local contractors to come in on? We haven't changed that policy.
All of the roofing work associated with the, this project and the others have been competitively bid according to statute.
And that includes this project we're talking about here?
Correct.
And it would also include this building we're in today?
This, different subject, I mean, this, I presented information to the school board regarding this pro, this building that we acquired the roofing work at this building through a US Communities, which was a, US Communities bidding authority that the board's approved.
So that's a different process?
Different process. But that was for this building, that was to address some immediate concerns and to get this project moving forward.
We know we have immediate concerns because it rains.
Absolutely.
Every time it falls through the roof here. So, thank you.
Okay, the Voyager Bus Company contract, RFP, RFQ 4045, I have Member Johnston, that's, that's item B1 on the second page. Did you, you wanted a separate vote on that?
A separate vote, please.
Did you have discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor of the Voyager Bus Company contract, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. That's approved 7-0. And then the next page, change order number 1, B1 that is, Denfeld, there's actually 2 at Denfeld, both under 1. Did you, what did you want to do on there, vote separately on the combined number 1?
A separate vote if I could.
That's an asbestos abatement and electrical change orders at Denfeld.
Yep, yep, all 3 of those.
That's B1, which, which includes 2, 2 change orders, 2 combined change orders. All right, all those in favor of the change order, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. That's approved 7-0. And then this would be also on change orders, B3 on the, next to the last page of the business report, that's Piedmont Elementary School. Member Johnston?
I just had a question. This apparently is involving a storm sewer, a change order, you know, fairly significant amount, and I was surprised to see that a storm sewer wasn't included in the original plans. Could you tell me a little bit about why that wasn't? And seems like, seems like it should have been, just give me a little bit of history there, Mr. Leiter.
Chair Grover, members of the board, Member Johnston, the project was originally bid contemplating some possible alternatives to how and where the storm sewer retention system, storm water treatment systems would be located. And that, that bid package was being contemplated to occur after a timeframe where the main package or the majority of the building was bid. School board had approved Northland Constructors to do majority of the site work on the Piedmont site. Ultimately, it was determined that the best location for the storm water treatment facility would, would be in the district's property that was existing and part of the property that was already being affected by Northland Constructors. And it really made sense to maintain one earthworks, one site work contractor on that site performing all of the work that would be impacted, including the storm water treatment. So that, that's really what it came down to, is Northland was already on site, they're already doing work that is over the top of where we're putting the storm water treatment facilities, including some sidewalk rocks and some playground facilities. And so the storm water treatment facilities are underground in that area. And rather than that 2 contractors working in the same area, we felt it was most appropriate to process the change order. And we had pretty adequate engineering estimating to determine that this was an appropriate value for that work.
I think in short, the point is it wasn't omitted. The point was there were 2 locations, 2 ways to do the storm water treatment there. What you're saying is one is on the existing Piedmont site, the other involved putting the storm water treatment on the property we're purchasing from the church. So we had 2 designs and 2 ways of looking at it, and we wanted to do further assessment which one of those made the most sense. And, and that's what you see here after, it wasn't a way it was omitted, we just had 2 different alternatives to take a look at and study more as we move this project forward.
I was just going to add, just thank you, Mr. Leiter, for that explanation there, it's helped explain it to me what was going on.
Member Casper?
Speaking of the property and, and acquisition or discussion, I'd, I'd like to request also an update on where we're at with that property that the superintendent just mentioned. I don't know if I can say it, but he did it, so I can say it. But where we're at with an update on that property as far as that site goes. And I also want to thank you, Mr. Leiter, for providing me with information regarding a question I had regarding the storm water system at the new Western Middle School. a question I had regarding the storm water system at the new Western Middle School, handling the kind of storm damage that we saw in the western parts of our city and how that system would handle that. So, I want to thank you for that as well.
Thanks, member Casper. I'd like to second that request for an update on, I think that's probably going to require a closed session. And I think we, next opportunity, we have to do that, we can be all brought up to speed on that. Member Glass?
Yes, a follow-up on Johnson's question on Piedmont. Does that mean that the second site where the church was, had a bid for the storm water system that we just didn't fund? And that, any work on that site would be reduced to the amount? We're not going to build two storm water facilities, are we?
No way, member Glass, members of the board, we're not going to build two storm water. We had conceptual design considerations, looking at both site options, ultimately decided from a, from a process and sequencing of construction, the onsite location was then more fully developed, and that'll be the only treatment facility.
Sure. And I was also looking forward to seeing the storm water designed for the Western Middle School that you gave to member Casper. Did you give him something in, in writing you could share with the rest of us?
I did. I apologize, I should have sent that out to all board members. It seemed that member Casper was the only one interested in that, so...
No, I don't think so.
All right. Well, then I will, I will send it. It was electronic format, I'll send it to all board members.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
We've moved and seconded.
We've moved and seconded the report. There are no other items to be withheld. We'll go ahead and vote on those items that we have not already voted on separately. All those in favor of the report as a whole, say aye. Aye opposed? That's, the report as a whole is passed five two with members Glass and Johnston voting That brings us to special resolutions. We have none. Questions and other before adjournment. I don't see any lights on. I did, I do, I don't really want to, but I feel like I must comment on the early stages of this evening's meeting. This board cannot continue to endure, in my opinion, the ongoing regular disruptive behavior of one member in particular. And I think we are going to have to decide if we, as a board, want to continue to deal with that and consider what, what we, again, as a board, can do to end this continuous, regular disruptive behavior. And, member Johnston?
Who are you referring to, me?
I certainly am.
The disruptive behavior, I did not make the minutes, have the minutes wrongly put down. I did not walk out of the room without properly adjourning the meeting. And to blame this on me is really quite an epitome of arrogance. You are the chairperson, you're supposed to know how to run the meetings. So, if you want to keep going over this every time, that's your choice. And I would suggest that you start to learn how to run a meeting. Because I was elected and I will be here, I'm not going away.
Member Casper?
I actually have something other after you're done with this, so...
I'm done. Go ahead, member Casper.
Last week, at our education committee meeting, we discussed the potential of putting forth a referendum on the, on the fall ballot regarding an operating levy. Today, on the news, they reported that we were going to discuss that on one of the television stations, I don't recall which one, which kind of surprised me to hear on TV that we were going to discuss it. So, I just want to point that out, I don't know if other folks had heard that as well. But obviously, we're not discussing it, but I wanted to point out that somewhere that information had gotten out that we were going to be discussing it at a board meeting, so, or at this board meeting tonight.
May I respond to that? Member Casper, thank you. There was discussion, was it at the business committee meeting? I believe there was discussion about...
On Saturday, I know.
I understand that. And I believe that's probably where the media attention was initiated. And there was some discussion, there was little, little indication at that committee meeting that there would be adequate board support to approve an operating levy if it were to appear on the ballot. And it was, and again, I guess you could say the silence among several board members was deafening, and there was an opportunity for board members to speak up. That doesn't, doesn't mean that we couldn't do it. In fact, we could add that to the agenda right now, tonight, with unanimous consent and discuss it if we wanted to, but we don't, I don't know if there's much point in it, if it's going to be an exercise in futility. If we, if we don't have solid board support for an operating levy on the ballot, there's little chance of success. I think, I think that's probably why, why we aren't going, haven't gone forward with it. Member Casper?
Well, I'd like to go on record then, if we still are on record, of supporting the opportunity for the public to weigh in on it.
Okay.
I believe that they should be given that opportunity to weigh in on it, they should be given that right to vote if they chose to do something or want to support something like that. I think that's our, my, at least from my way of thinking, our obligation to give the public the right to either support that or to not support that in, in a vote, so.
Okay, thank you, member Casper. I'm going to ask Mr. Hanson what the timeframes would be if we were to want to move forward with that for the November ballot?
The deadline, as I remember it, is August 20th, that we need to have a board action by that date, which is Friday of this week. Yes. And that is the date that we have to notify Minnesota Department of Education, as well as the county auditor's office, for anything that we're going to have on the ballot at that point in time.
Sorry, that should include the exact language, illegal language, it's not just say, yeah, we want to do it, it would have to have illegal language drawn up, adopted, approved.
That would have to be part of the resolution that we put in front of you.
When would we have to post the meeting for Friday?
Tomorrow.
Not today? Tomorrow would be adequate for Friday? Council?
Yep.
Seven to two hours, yeah.
Tomorrow would not meet, tomorrow's Wednesday, that would not meet a Friday posting rule? So, we would have to post the meeting tonight, correct?
Correct.
Member Student Rep. Whitzig?
Thanks, Chair Rover. Yeah, sorry I was late. Actually, it's kind of, I came from a stringing strings rehearsal, which you guys had heard earlier, that's why I was late. But I guess that goes into my point, and I'm just one lone student voice, but we really want a levy. It really helps programming, curriculum, facilities. It's needed.
Member Lawson?
I too would support a levy, however, knowing that we may have a divided board, and we know the results of that, I don't think that this is the appropriate time. I am in the schools often, frequently, I know the class sizes, some are not good, and we do need more support. And it comes from the state, and we're not getting that. You students have been very resilient, and I appreciate that, but I don't know how much longer we can ask of you and our teachers. But until this board, all seven of us can support a levy, it, it's been shown that it won't pass. And so, I don't know that at this point, knowing the outcome of that, that we can move forward with this at this point in time.
I don't see anyone making a motion. I don't hear, as chair, I don't hear enough support to, in my opinion, and I'd be happy to have this contradicted by board members, I don't hear enough support to, for a referendum to lead me to call a special meeting for Friday.
Chair Rover, I just want to echo what member Lawson just said. It's not going to be supported by this community if it's not supported by this board. And you heard Ann talk about the class size, I've heard other board members talk about class size. There is no policy on the number, a specific number for class size. None of us want students, 35 students in a classroom. And I wasn't going to mention this because I thought it was not important, but I wake up to the news every morning, and I heard on the Today Show that across this country, districts are putting more burdens on parents, where parents are now being asked to not just buy pencils and notebooks, but laundry detergent and, and, you know, all kinds of items that the district cannot afford. We need to understand that the money that we receive from the state and the federal government is not what we used to have, and we do need support from this community to support programs and to support our students. But a levy, operating levy is not going to pass if this board is not together on it. And so...
Any further comments?
Okay.
I haven't, if I heard, if I heard significant affirmative support for calling a special meeting for Friday, I would do so, but I have not heard that. Does anyone disagree with that?
I don't disagree.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Adjournment moved by member Saliga Ponco. Seconded by myself. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.